Hello, 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 mic check. Okay, good, hey, oh, now we're cooking with gas. Okay, so I'll put this aside right here and this is... You see that I've already put a ton of questions and this is chapter nine, that's not... Let's do 10 and 11 because we already have some stuff for eight and you have a practice, not a practice exam, you have an exam for nine. So let's go to 10 and um I can open up the floor for any like high um like high value like, hey, I looked at this, I have no idea what that is. But if not, I'll show you what I think is uh is tricky. And then I'm gonna show you how um how to deal with it. So anyone have any anything specific on chapter 10 that you'd like me to talk about? And you can either refer to uh the number of the slide or just say that, just say the topic and then uh we can do that either way. So and I also have my chat.
Just FYI, the um questions never did actually post for chapter 10. Um on announcements. It just says like the topic is closed. We got 11 though.
I hate working from my uh between Mac and PC, sometimes they don't talk to each other. If not, I could just open it on my end and then just repost it. Yep. Yeah, because it's from our, ah, okay, so let's do it this way. Um, I'll just tell you what's good and then uh I'll repost the questions. Or I'll just remake them either way. So let's look at, then let's just take, let's tear, let's tear 10 apart and then uh let's make some questions live. I could do it that way. So I'm looking at 10. And the first thing you, the first thing you see is this thing, right? Sensory integration and processing and motor output, which looks just like um, what do you call that? It looks just like the um um homocystase arc. So if you think of it that way, you can then look at uh you can then look at this thing, just like the homocystase arc. So I have my pieces here, right? And instead of a set point, um you not only have brain, but you also have spinal cord. And of course, instead of sensory, you have ascending and afferent. And instead of um motor, you have descending and e um effector. So it looks like this. Um, which of the following um is uh carries sensory input to the brain? Would it be afferent? Afferent? Both? Neither? And then if I have sensory, which the following carries motor out, motor signals either out of the brain or to the muscles.
Afferent is sensory, correct?
Yeah, so it goes, you gotta look at this kind, this slide, right? Just like it was ascending, descending. But now instead of saying ascending, descending, now we're just, you're just thinking of different words. Afferent and efferent. So think of it this way. Afferent, this side. Efferent or the effector side is this side, right? And of course, everything that's integration, set point, whatever. It's not only brain, it's also what? Spinal cord, because remember, we're gonna also do the same question that's like this for um reflexes. But remember, this will be the same exact reflex question, but all you have to do is cross out the, cross out the word brain. Because you have the same exact thing for the reflexes, but there's of course no brain. So there's still sensory, integration and motor output, but in a reflex, no brain. And we're gonna get to that momentarily. Okay, so that's the first big thing. This thing right here, because um this is exactly how you live. Now, when you're looking at the first slide or slide number two, the other thing is also what? You see here, remember we talked about this? You have the star, which is neurons, and all the support uh support staff is neuroglia. So then you're gonna have to know, I gotta know all the neuroglia. And how do I, how do I always get you guys regarding uh two categories? Um, I could do it like this. Goes, which of the following um supports uh the neuron by uh connecting the neuron to a blood supply? And then what do I do? Modified matching. I just give you all the neuroglia that we had before. And what were the neuroglia choices? I've had astrocyte, oligodendrocyte. Uh, what was the other one? Microglia. Ependymal cell. And and then I could do, and of course, the answer to this one is astrocyte, the first one. But then can I do the same thing for each and every one? Yup. So which of the following uh support, and look at the keyword, supports the neuron uh by producing myelin in the CNS, and that's oligodendrocyte. Right? And then which of the following um deal with any pathogen or bacteria in the brain? And of course, that'll be microglia. Which the following produce CSF in the choroid plexus? So now, this is a nice question here, because it's now gonna link choroid plexus with CSF. And I want you here in the, I want you to think, what are we talking about? We're talking about the ventricles. So this should be in your brain. Right? CSF, ependymal cell, that should all be in your CSF box. Same as above. Now, you see how we had oligodendrocyte for the CNS? Then we should be thinking, oh, wasn't there another word for oligodendrocyte? Yup. Goes, which of the following uh produce uh myelin in the PNS? And of course, that could be what? Oligodendrocyte? Uh, or schwansel? And of course, the answer in PNS, myelin, schwann. But CNS, oligodendrocyte. Now, do you see what we're doing? We're taking just one slide, one concept, right? And then it, it's fuck what? Let me get, let me do a modified matching to astrocyte, oligodendrocyte, microglia, and ependymal cell. But we're not done, because you know there's an oligodendrocyte in the CNS and there's also schwansel in the PNS. Okay? So that's how we're gonna deal with both things. Now, what's another way that, that's of course typical. But what's another way to look at neuroglia versus neuron? Don't you think I'm gonna do a function question? Which the, and let's do it in the way that you guys hate the most, right? Because you know, when you train, you do the, you do the thing that is your weakness. And this is a weakness for a lot in the class is goes, which of the um how do, how do I put this? Which of the uh, which of the following cells um carries the action potential? Now, what you need to know is action potential is electricity, right? For the message. And then could I do this? Neuron and then do uh any one of these? Because I want to be able to compare neuron and neuroglia. Instead of just saying neuron, neuroglia, both neither, what, what will I do? I could do something like this. And you see, this'll start what? Doesn't this start attracting you? Because, but then if you're doing your uh your protocol, action potential. So in your head, you're gonna think electricity. Is there electricity in the neuron? Yes. Is there electricity in oligodendrocyte? No. Schwansel? No. And let me put like another thing to uh to distract you. So you see that? These all are together. These oligodendrocyte, schwansels, and ependymal cells or epandyma is a support. The only one is the star out of these four is what? And what does the stars do? Does the action potential, does the electricity? And that's the star, that's the uh, that is the neuron or the nerve cell. Now it goes, and also we could do that also backwards, right? But this is what, this is the, this question, I think you guys are already learning uh learning that, oh, that's what he does. The modified matching, but this one I think still trips you guys up. When I start, when I start taking apart categories and then spreading it out. So neuron, I want you to think star, action potential. And the star power, power, electricity. Okay, and that's this thing. So if I say uh conducts electrical impulses, right? So is electricity. Or if I mentioned uh produces neurotransmitters, who is that? That's the star. The neuroglia does everything else. Okay? Everyone good with that one? And see how uh you can, you might get sucker punched by number eight? Alrighty. Okay. Afferent, efferent, we already went over. Brain, spinal cord, we already know. Okay, here's the other thing where it gets iffy, where people start losing their way a little bit. Um, again, I don't like the words, it kinds of, what do you call that? Uh, there's a lot of things to look at. Let's look at this. You see how this picture, there's a picture here, there's a picture here, there's a picture here. And this picture can be broken up into this versus this. So right off the bat, isn't this three questions already, right? So let's make three sets. First set, I need to distinguish central nervous system versus peripheral nervous system. So I could ask, which of the following is part of your CNS, central nervous system? Okay? Now, the easy question would be, is it brain, spinal cord? Both? Neither? Okay, of course, it's both. Because if you look at this picture, you have the brain and spinal cord. That's an easy one, you guys already know how to do that. But this is the one that messes you up. Right? It's this. Um um I'll do something like um I could do something like this. Do you see what I did? I took this picture and I took apart, I took it all these other pieces. Now, if you didn't know that brain and spinal cord is uh is a central nervous system, this is gonna start making your mind wander. But you see CNS, what's the first thing you're gonna think of? Brain and spinal cord. So you go through your process elimination. Which of the following is is uh part of the CNS? Is the muscle brain or spinal cord? Nope. Is the parietal lobe, is that a brain or spinal cord? And it's of course brain. So B looks good. My spinal nerve, is that part of my spinal cord? No, it's a nerve that's outside of my spinal cord. It's just connected to my spinal cord. So this is outside, so that ain't it. Your cranial nerves, it's part of your brain, but it's not your brain. So what's the only one that wasn't either brain or spinal cord? It's parietal lobe. So the answer to 10 is uh parietal lobe is part of your central nervous system. And can I do the exact opposite? Make all other parts? Can I do this? Which of the following is part of your central nervous system? Can I just get, can I then, I mean, peripheral nervous system? Sorry, do the exact opposite? Now I could do, which of the following is part of your peripheral nervous system except? This is the same exact question. 11 is the same exact question. But this trips you up, doesn't it? So if it's not peripheral nervous system, it's gotta be what? Central nervous system. Because if you look at the slide, aren't they opposites of each other? One's over here, the other one's over here. And you gotta know these parts, right? Afferent, efferent. Can I do that as well? Which of the following is a part of your CNS? Is it the afferent pathway? Efferent pathway? Both? Neither? Right? The afferent pathway is what? Sensory. Efferent pathway are your motor, motor nerves or motor neurons. So it can't be both, because that isn't brain or spinal cord. So the answer to 12 is what? It's neither. Because if you studied, you know that your afferent and efferent pathway is where? It's peripheral nervous system. It's the other sets of boxes. And I already have an afferent versus efferent question above. You gotta know this one's sensory and this one's what? Motor. Um, what's another thing? In the motor division, so now I have an a sensory versus motor, right? Or I could do this. Which of the, which of the following are part of your afferent, right? Can I give a whole bunch of sensory? And I mix it up with a whole bunch of skeletal muscle, cardiac muscle, and glands? Ooh, how's this question? This might be good that uh I didn't give you those other questions. Those other questions are uh were a little bit easier. This one's a little bit more than what you're gonna see. Uh, which of the, uh, which of the following is uh is part of the afferent pathway? Now, of course, afferent, you're gonna think sensory. Right? So uh can I think stuff like, like sensory receptor, right? So let me put the answer for A and let's say um um, what's the sensory? I don't wanna say hair cell, what's a better? Uh, let's say, what did we know already was sensory? Merkel cell. Okay, and then, well, you know this is the answer, because Merkel's is what? Tactile, it's sensory. All I then have to do is say muscle, heart, and glands. So I'll uh I'll say um muscle and what? Heart. So we know afferent is what? Sensory. The only sensory that we talked about here is what? Merkel's. And this is a beautiful question that I just made off the top of my head. Um, because this is now integrating something that you should know from another, from another chapter, that you can apply to what? This right here. So that's the second type of question, sensory versus motor. Now, do you see the motor have a somatic and an autonomic? Autonomic controls things that we can't control. Somatic controls things that we can control. So could I have a question that does that? Ooh, I should be careful, because the thing in my head is actually on the exam. Wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm about to.
So that we can see the questions, because right now the um the PowerPoint is in front of
Oh, so the only thing that it sees is uh um that's a recording is the PowerPoint?
Boy, I can see the questions right behind it, but I think you might have to like pull it forward.
No, I, but why is that? Because in my screen, it's right in front of it.
Oh, that's weird.
Let me, let me look at uh what's it sharing?
Happening for anyone else, or maybe.
Let me see what's it sharing, maybe it's just sharing the window. I wanna share a screen. So uh do you see this screen? What do you see on the screen? Because I see questions.
You can't see anything.
I see PowerPoint.
We don't see anything.
It's blank.
Because it says I'm currently sharing my entire screen.
Mm-mm.
It was up earlier, but now it's blank. I don't know what happened, but it's blank now.
Let's, let's share a different screen. Do you see this screen?
No.
Alright, let's share a tab. Do you see the questions?
No.
Not, same thing keeps happening, it just keeps.
So what do you, so what do you see?
I don't know what, how you had it before, but if you could get it back to that, like, cuz up until like the last question that you did, it just, it froze, like.
The only thing we could see is your picture.
Yeah.
Alright, 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 let me. Well, just now, what do I always do? I'll publish these, I'll publish uh these sets of questions, because that's what I was talking about.
Okay.
Let me look, because recording because I'm on Firefox, so it should be doing what I'm supposed to be doing.
It was, up until like a minute ago.
Maybe it's because maybe if I mute settings. Because if I get out, it's gonna stop recording.
Yeah.
And then I have to do everything all over again. Oh. Is it, am I recording? Yeah, I'm recording, that's live. Let me just, I don't wanna mess with this. And nothing, right? It says, I'm sharing my entire screen, but nothing's. What if I move all this? Alright, uh, this is what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna leave and then come back in. It's the only way I can, I can probably even remotely try to fix anything. Alright, I'll be right back. Alright, does everyone see the questions now? Hello, mic check? So you see the questions?
Uh, I just see us.
Maybe it's privacy policy. Yeah, my settings have all what? It says everything good.
In a minute, but if you guys are there around seven, I'm gonna pull up a little later and I'll see you. Peace.
Alright, and it's saying I'm recording.
Now there's a video. Now I can see your screen.
Alright, so what do you see? Do you see, uh, do you see two?
I can see your entire desktop. Oh, now it's gone.
Now it's gone?
Now it's gone, yes.
Back to looking at us.
Yeah, something's up. I don't understand, why is it saying everything's okay? And app permissions are open, everything's open?
We can see every, like your mouse and everything that's going on right now. Like we can see all of that. But now it's gone, now it's back.
So you can see this?
Yes, we can see that.
Yeah, I would click that.
Everything like that.
You can see, you can see all your faces and then you can see the, the mouse, right?
Yes.
So what if I did this? Can you see this?
Yes, we can, yes.
Okay, alright. It doesn't recognize my, my, my other screen. So, and don't worry, of course, published list, so I'll just go back and forth through this. Alright, so uh and if you're following along, I'll tell you the uh the slide. So currently, now we've been messing with slide six for the past uh, how many questions? We're asked uh three or four questions, right? So if you look at slide six, of course, it has CNS versus PNS versus, and then it, it chops up the peripheral nervous system into sensory and motor. And then the mo, uh, the motor could further to uh somatic versus autonomic. And that's where we are. So I could ask a somatic versus autonomic question. And remember, soma means body. So an autonomic, auto means, you know, you're on autopilot. You have no control over that. So I could have this question, goes, which of the following uh control skeletal muscle? Now we know skeletal muscle is completely voluntary, so that's gotta be somatic. But what can't we control? So I could have this question, which of the following uh which of the following systems controls uh your um heart rate? Can you control your heart rate? Nope. So the answer is what? Autonomic. Autonomic.
Would it be fair to say blood pressure as well?
Yeah. Yeah, because can you control your blood pressure by using your mind? Can't. Can you control the sounds that your stomach makes when, uh, you know, uh, when you have a bad street taco? Can't. So anything you can't control, you're gonna think what? Autonomic. And what's the only muscle do we know that you can control? Somatic. And this is a lovely question because isn't, uh, isn't that, um, uh, what do you call that? Does, isn't that integration? Something that I'm getting, uh, from, um, uh, another chapter? And it's now relating to this chapter. So this particular set of questions relate directly to what type of muscle? Right? And of course, what type, what's the only type of muscle that I can control? It's what? Skeletal. So skeletal is somatic nervous system. And what you, uh, what controls, uh, things that you can't control? Um, and let's give another example for things you can't control is what?
Not food, but, uh, intestines.
Did I see in slide 11, like intrusive thoughts were in that too?
What?
Uh, for like, um, automatic? Or no, am I just like not?
Well, because right now, if you think autonomic, I want you to think, uh, heart and GI.
Oh.
That will be your new trigger. Your new key word. So you see autonomic nervous system, things I can't control. So can you control your small intestines? Right? If I had a ham sandwich, do, did I say to my small intestines? Okay, start absorbing. Can't. Does it all by itself? So autonomic? Both? Neither. Now, now that I'm here, somatic and autonomic, right? I got that down. You know, autonomic breaks even the further, remember? Because didn't we talk about sympathetic and parasympathetic? Right? So could I have this question? Which of the following organs, uh, gets affected, uh, during, uh, during sympathetic nervous system? And what was sympathetic nervous, uh, system? Was that fight or flight or was that, um, feed and breed? It was what? Fight or flight. So could I put something like this? Uh, I could put something that's in fight or flight, your heart, which I can't control. But that's under what? Sympathetic nervous system. And then the rest, I'll put something like your stomach, um, uh, salivary gland and small intestines. Now, do you see the thing that's sticking out? All these are where? There's all in your, uh, abdominal pelvic, right? Or not, or, or deals with your GI. Glands deal with your GI. Stomach is in your GI. Small intestines, they're all where? And it goes sympathetic nervous system deals with fight or flight. So what, what's gonna get turned on the most out of all these four? Heart. And could I do the, can I do the same exact opposite? Which of the following organs? Gets a, uh, gets directly affected during parasympathetic? Can I say stomach? Remember you smoke a ton of weed, what do you get? You get the munchies. Heart? Both? Neither? Or I could be direct. Yep.
Uh, for, yeah, really quick, sorry. Uh, somatic, you want us to think more like smooth and cardiac, but when.
No, 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 somatic is what you can control.
I'm sorry.
So what skeletal? What's the only muscle you can control? Somatic, skeletal, autonomic, everybody else.
Yeah, but then when we're thinking of sympathetic.
Sympathetic is part of the autonomic nervous system. I'm breaking that even more. I want you to think fight or flight. So more your chest, right? Heart rate, blood pressure has to go what? Up, right? But, uh, um, but what happens in, um, the, the feed and breed or your parasympathetic? Your GI, your glands, those are gonna get, uh, more stimulated. That's why when you have a parasympathetic nervous system stimulation, that's why your blood pressure goes down. Because it's not being stimulated. That's why your heart rate goes down because it's not being stimulated. But then why do you get the munchies? Because your GI is getting stimulated. So think stomach, the munchies. I smoked a bag of weed. That's what? Parasympathetic. But if I did a whole bunch of coke, that's what? Sympathetic. Sympathetic, well, what will cocaine do to my heart? It'll ramp it up. And ask anyone who's ever done cocaine, don't ask me because I've never heard of anything, right? Uh, are you in the mood to have a ham sandwich when you're all coked up? No. You just want to do what? Uh, party all night and then write a novel after. Uh, eating is the last thing because cocaine and the other opioids are sympathomimetic drugs. They'll ramp up the sympathetic. And that's why your heart wants to jump out of its chest if you give, if you have sympathetic nervous system. Right? And then the exact opposite, which is what? Parasympathetic. Now, since we talked about heart and blood pressure, do you think I could ask sympathetic versus parasympathetic regarding that? Uh, uh, which of the following? Are some, uh, uh, is a characteristic of sympathetic nervous system? Increase heart rate? Decrease heart rate? Both, neither? That's the easier question. And of course, what do we know? It's gonna be increased. Can I change heart rate into blood pressure? Sure. And what was the other one? Let's do pupils. Goes, which of the following is a characteristic of, uh, sympathetic nervous system stimulation? Uh, will my pupils, uh, constrict? Dilate? Go blind? We see Jesus. All right. Of course, go blind, see the almighty, or my almighty at least. That's of course not, not, not an option. But you have constrict versus dilate. And of course, what happens if you have a fight or flight? Don't you want to see every punch coming? Don't you want to see every avenue of escape when you're trying to run away, uh, uh, from something that's chasing you? So what's gonna happen to your eyeballs? Doesn't it want to let more light in? So it's gonna do what? Dilate. And then the parasympathetic? Exact opposite. And remember, when you're making, when you're looking at the questions and you don't see the opposite question, what can you, what should you do? You should do what? Make the opposite question. So I have this, I copied it. I pasted it. And then do what? Instead of sympathetic, I'll write the word what? Parasympathetic. And this is the same exact advice that I state to people who make, uh, flashcards. You not only learn it, you know, left to right or front to back, you gotta learn it back to front. Because now parasympathetic, what's gonna happen? Your eyes should do what? Constrict because you're relaxed, nowhere to go. Don't need to see too much. So it's constriction and let's not make this goofy, make this one both. Neither, I already made a goofy question. Okay? Everyone good with sympathetic versus parasympathetic? Everyone good with this picture? Uh, do you see this picture? Does everyone see this? We're good? You see this? So now you see, did you see what we just did in the last 10 minutes? I made a question about this. I made a question about this versus this, right? Central nervous versus peripheral nervous system. Then I made a question of, uh, to break down sensory versus motor. And then you see these two things. Then I made a question somatic and autonomic. And now I know autonomic breaks into, uh, two sections, right? GI stuff or, you know, gut stuff and, or smooth muscle stuff and cardiac stuff. Because one's fight or flight. And this is a pancreas here, uh, forgot to mention that. That's, uh, pancreas is big on what? The stuff that you eat. So that's how you know I covered all bases. And now you know that, uh, didn't we discuss this slide in some form massively during the, uh, during the lecture? Yeah. So that's, uh, so that's golden. Okay? And you got now a whole bunch of questions on it. So if I'm looking at the next set of slides, migraine, we don't care. Migraine, we don't care. Neurons, cell body dendrites, axon. So if you look at this, I could easily make a question on that. And it's a function versus parts question. So which of the following, uh, receives? Right? And that's what receptive? Right? Uh, receives the, uh, the action potential. Or we already know that means the electricity. So I'm talking about parts of a neuron. So what are the parts of the neuron? Drendites? Soma or cell body? And of course, uh, the axon. And the answer of course is what? Dendrites. That's the antenna we talked about. And then cell body, right? That does all the, has a nucleus, cytoplasm, whatever, right? Uh, that's a minor question, but what's a better question? Which of the following, uh, transmits or sends out the action potential? And of course, same exact thing, dendrites, cell body, axon, and the answer is also axon. I could also say which is the following? Uh, has myelin? And in your head, you're gonna think that's the insulation of my neuron. And of course dendrites, cell body, axon. The answer of course for 24? Axon. And what else do I know about the axon? It transmits things, which is the following? Participates in saltatory conduction. Saltatory conduction, remember when I was, uh, hopping around the room? Right? That's sending or transmitting the message. So isn't that axon as well? So I just took that slide and did what? Figured out every which way I could ask a physiology question regarding the star of this whole show of this entire chapter, which is the axon. So when we look at that and that slide number, now it won't tell me the slide. Slide number nine? Now I can now tell the, the difference between cell body, dendrites and axon. The next one, uh, and saltatory conduction, another thing you're gonna also in your mind, nodes of Ranvier. Remember those little spaces that it allows the electricity to go where the myelin doesn't? I wanted you to think nodes of Ranvier, saltatory conduction. And let's ask a physiology question. Um, choose the true statement regarding, uh, nodes of Ranvier. Those has, uh, an abundance of myelin. That's not true. Uh, participates, makes the, uh, makes the action potential, transmit faster. That's true. Makes the action potential, transmit slower. That's false. And, uh, um, provides nourishment to the neuron. That's false because what? Node of Ranvier is part of the neuron. So when we're looking at this, right? Which of the, oops, which of a false? So choose the false statement. So you're gonna have, uh, oh, did I put more than one false? What did I do? Abundance of myelin provides, makes the action potential, uh, slower nourishment. Okay. So when we're looking at each one of these, when you're looking at a, um, uh, a modified true false statement, it turns A, B, C and D into separate questions to be answered. So when you're looking at a modified true false, we already know nodes of Ranvier have to do with my axon, has to do with saltatory conduction. So that's already in, that's already in the box of your mind when you're looking at the word nodes of Ranvier, saltatory conduction. So we have to ask ourselves, the nodes of Ranvier, did it have a lot of myelin? Nope. It has no myelin. That's why they call it a node because it's, it, it's there alone. Makes the action potential faster. Saltatory conduction, right? I was hopping around the room. In theory, makes everything what? Faster. So that's good. I'm not gonna cross that out. Makes the action potential slower. No, it doesn't. Action potential has to go fast in an axon. And then does it provide nourishment to the neuron? No, because it is a part of the neuron. So that's not it. So when you did your, um, uh, your process of elimination, you found that your answer is, uh, makes the, um, the action potential faster? Is it, is it, uh, nodes of Ranvier? Yes. Is it saltatory conduction? Yes. So then is your answer correct? It is. Then you move on with your day. All right. Everyone good with, uh, saltatory conduction, parts of the axon and nodes of Ranvier? We're good? All right. Next. So that's, that covers one, two, three, four slides. And another word you can also add to this is what? Myelin. Oh, no, I don't want to confuse you. Let's ask a myelin question. We already know, um, it goes, uh, which of the following conducts the action potential the fastest? Is it myelinated axons? Unmyelinated? And of course, we know myelin nodes of Ranvier, saltatory conduction, fast. So myelin is fast. Can I now take, so the answer to 27 is of course myelin. Because it's part of saltatory conduction. Saltatory conduction makes things go fast. And remember, we talked about white matter versus, uh, gray matter? Can I do the same exact question? But instead of saying myelinated axon and unmyelinated axon? Instead of myelinated, can I say a white matter? And instead of unmyelinated, can I say gray matter? So if you look at 27, 28, it's the same exact question. So I want you to associate white lightning, myelinated, fast. Lightning can go shoots. That's an electricity that goes fast. And the other side is simply what? The other. Okay? So that's a myelin versus not myelin, gray versus white. You go through the next set of slides, multiple sclerosis, we don't care. Multipolar, bipolar and unipolar. And that's slide number 16. That was a good one too. And if you look at it, let's look at slide 16 real quick. When you look at slide 16, you could see it goes multipolar deals with what? Autonomic nervous system. Right? Bipolar, you can think special senses, ears, eyes, right? Everything on your head. And then unipolar deals with, uh, peripheral nervous system. So if you're a picturesque person, you look at slide 17, you write down multipolar, you're gonna, uh, write down what? Central nervous system. Right? This. Bipolar, you're gonna write down what? Ears, eyes, nose, right? Taste, smell. And then, uh, ganglia? You see this little knot that's sticking out on the side of the axon? That's a, uh, knotted up, uh, piece of, um, uh, nervous tissue. So that's gotta be what? Peripheral nervous system. So you got your CNS, special senses and your, um, uh, peripheral nervous system or your PNS. So I can take a question. Let's write a question. Uh, which of the following types of neurons, uh, deal with, uh, mostly, uh, uh, CNS action potentials? You see the keyword CNS, you're gonna think multipolar. You see the key word CNS, you're gonna think multipolar. My patient was born blind. Isn't that a special sense sight? Uh, which neurons are, uh, which neurons do not work? And of course, there's a special sense. It's of course bipolar. And, uh, which of the following deal with the PNS, which is of course the peripheral nervous system? And the answer is the same as above. So of course, it's what? Peripheral nervous system, you're gonna think unipolar. Okay? And that is slide number 17 if you're following along. Alright, next. They jump right into, uh, reflexes. And oh, look at here. It's gonna look just like the first set of questions that we did. So yeah, I could ask a sensory question. Yeah, I could ask a muscle question. But if I'm talking about a, um, um, what's it called? If I'm talking about a reflex, don't you think I'm gonna ask the one thing that makes it different? Than, uh, all the other things that we're talking about? So the key word here, reflex is interneuron. It is, and it doesn't say it here, but write the words in big letters right next to the interneuron, spinal cord. Because that's where the interneuron is. It's in the spinal cord. Now, do you notice there's no mention of brain here? So... Could I do this to you? Which of the following is, let me bring this up a little bit. Which of the following is not part of your reflex arc?
Can you get me an Alani?
Brain, afferent, efferent pathway, none. Of course, does a reflex have sensory? Yep. Does a reflex have motor? Yep. But the reflex doesn't have a what? Brain, right? Uh, which of the following? Um, is, um, is the central nervous component to the reflex arc? Brain, spinal cord, afferent, efferent. And again, there's no brain in a reflex, but isn't there a spinal cord? So the answer to 33 is what? Spinal cord. And then, can I do this to you? This, where's the location of your interneuron? And can I have the same as above? You know interneuron, you're gonna automatically think what? Spinal cord. My interneuron is in a spinal cord. And what, and every time you see interneuron, I want you to think what? Not only spinal cord, I want you to think, oh, we're talking about reflexes. Okay? So that's the best way to deal with, um, uh, to deal with this kind of question. And check it out. And just like, uh, we had technical difficulty, we had about like 40 minutes worth of stuff. We're almost churning out what? A minute of question, uh, a question a minute of creation. Look at that. This is, this is actually looking better than the, the actual file I originally gave to you guys. Because the original file I gave to you guys, I just took the easier questions and just made them a little harder. The next set of slides, uh, have neuroglia all over it. We already did that. But the one neuroglia that we didn't talk about, or neuraglia, is satellite cells. So if you look at slide 25, satellite cells and Schwann cells are in the PNS. So I could ask, uh, questions like this. Which of the following neuroglia is located in the peripheral nervous system? Is it your Schwann cells? We already know that does. Is it your satellite cells? Yep. Because of the chart on, um, slide number 25. So the answer is both. Then could I do this? Um, regarding, uh, what is the function of your Schwann cells? Ooh, let me make a nice distractor. I got a nice idea here. Um, can I do this to you? Makes, um, uh, produces myelin in CNS, produces myelin in PNS, right there. Right there is where you're gonna start playing this game, like, oh, it's gotta be either one or the other. Don't do that. That's why you have process of elimination. People who do that, you're not doing process elimination. You're already going, I think I know what he's trying to do. No? You're looking at my distractor. This is a classic distractor. I put opposites in there to make you think that it has to be one of the opposites. But of course, what goes, um, if I meant satellite cell, right? What is the function of the satellite cell? What would, what will it do? It, uh, it, um, uh, stores excess neurotransmitter. Uh, and then I'll do something like, uh, or, um, produces CSF. And that's ependymal cell, so that isn't it. So when we're looking at this satellite cell question, I have to do my, my protocol. So does a satellite cell have anything to do with myelin? No. So that's gotta be what? Gone. B, does it store excess neurotransmitter? Yes. Right? That's what a satellite cell does. And it's gotta be peripheral nervous system because a satellite, is it inside the earth or on top of the earth? No. It roams where? Outside or in the periphery. Now, it doesn't produce myelin in the CNS. That's what? Allegodendrocyte. It doesn't produce myelin in the PNS. That's Schwann cell. And ependymal cells produce CSF. Oh, look at here, who's the only one left? Stores excess neurotransmitter. And that's the extra one that we didn't talk about earlier. And, but it's on there. We talked about astrocytes, allegodendrocytes, microglia. And this is slide 25. We talked about everybody except who? So this slide, slide number 25, awesome. Know the type, right? Know what it is. And, uh, um, know each of, uh, each and every one of their functions. And it should be good. Characteristics, I don't care. Because this is an anatomy, physiology class. Characteristics, you start playing games, uh, playing games of, uh, you know, other things that we don't care about. Uh, axonal regeneration, we don't care. Uh, membrane potential. Here we go. Something we care about, isn't it? Now, the big thing about membrane potential is, is it on or is it off? So is it excitatory, which is on? Or is it inhibitory, which is off? So of course, I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna ask, um, the terms depolarization versus polarization. So which of the following action potentials would lead to muscle contraction? Motor neuron is the nerve that, uh, that connects into the muscle. And remember, we talked about, is it depolarization? Repolarization, hyperpolarization? Alright. Muscle contraction means, is it turning on or off? It's on. So which one's doing work? When does the pluses and minuses get together? D, depolarization, doing work. And then, when do we get the rest or recharge? Repolarization. And remember, I mentioned hyperpolarization? Just take that out of the picture. Just only think of what? This one and this one. This one's a distractor. So I could ask the exact opposite. Uh, same exact, same exact question, but what? The exact opposite. Let me move it to the next. Would lead to muscle relaxation. So you look at the word relaxation, re means what? Going back to lax means I'm not contract, I'm not, I'm not constricting, I'm not, uh, contracting, I'm not doing anything. So I'm going back to the default, which is what? Repolarization. I'm relaxing. The pluses and minuses will go in their separate corners. And then my muscles should do what? Relax. So repolarization, relaxation, recharge. Depolarization, I'm doing what? I'm doing work. Muscle contraction. Okay? Now, I can expand that. Because we talked about sodium and potassium. Sodium, potassium pump, right? Pump's either the on or off. So I could say like, uh, which of the following ions, uh, is involved in depolarization? An A+, sodium. B, uh, K+, potassium. Phosphorus, P. And I'll add what, like whatever other distractor, blah, 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 blah. You know it's between what? Sodium and potassium. What was a, uh, what was another, uh, what was another, uh, option? Remember, we talked about, uh, calcium and chloride? So can I do this to you as well? Instead of saying sodium, can I talk about the thing that turns on the heart? Calcium. And the other one, there's another thing other than potassium that turns things off? Chloride. And of course, calcium turns things, depolarization, on. Chloride is what? Turns things off. Hey, since these two things turn things off, doesn't that look like a beautiful both A and B picture? These two things turn things on. Doesn't that look like a beautiful both A and B picture? Both A and B regarding depolarization, both A and B regarding, uh, repolarization? Yeah. So you could now see, that's, again, two more questions I could do.
Could you add acetylcholine or no?
No, because I'm not talking, oh yeah, I could actually. But right now, we go, oh, let's do it. You know what?
Oh, no, don't do that.
No, because it's true. Because isn't it, it goes, isn't that what the neurotransmitters do? Don't I have excitatory neurotransmitters? So thanks for that. Which of the following is an excitatory? Excit, excitatory neurotransmitter? Now, instead of saying excitatory neurotransmitter, can I write increase, uh, it increases, uh, the intake of, uh, sodium? And we know sodium turns what? Things on. So, right? Uh, I could have, uh, what? Acetylcholine? GABA, which is gamma amino butyric acid. Now, it can't be both because one turns things on and the other one turns things what? Off. So excitatory means what? Turns things on. So what turns the, uh, muscle on? Acetylcholine. What, uh, GABA won't directly turn muscle off, but, uh, remember, we talked about how GABA quieted the brain? Right? So GABA is a inhibitory neurotransmitter. What's another excitatory neurotransmitter? Can I do this? Can I do the same exact thing? Oh, wait a minute. Don't we have a chart? Where's the chart? Well, if I see it, I'll show you it. But isn't there a chart of neurotransmitters? And it says what's excitatory, what's inhibitory, and what's its function?
Yeah, I think it's at like the end.
Right? And of course, right, uh, just a, I'm not gonna put it here, it might confuse you. But just know that, did I have to know neurotransmitters on what turns things on? What turns things off? Yeah. And this is a classic on and off, right here. Okay? So thank you for that question. But, uh, what are the odds that's gonna be on? I don't know, because you're the one who made it up. Maybe I'll just put it on there for giggles. Who knows? I can tell you right now, uh, since you said that, that means what? You're now starting to think like a test taker. I mean, test maker. Test taker, you don't have no idea what's going on. But as a test maker, you know, that's why I do these things. So it'll be behind the veil. You know, there's no, it's like, it's not a mystery. Uh, synapse, all the other things, neurotransmitters. Oh, you know what? Since you said that, guess what's on slide 48, just five slides down? Excitatory, inhibitory. Excitatory talked about sodium. Inhibitory talked about what? It goes, uh, um, and then you have excitatory, postsynaptic potential. Excitatory, you think sodium. Inhibitory, you're gonna think what? Potassium and what? Chloride. That's on slide 49. So that, this covers multiple slides, this one. And you know, if it covers multiple slides, don't you think it's fair game? I'm looking at, oh, here, it's on slide 53. That's where you have the other neurotransmitters. Okay? So, uh, if you look at slide 53, right? We already know acetylcholine, skeletal muscle, right? Aceto, acetylcholine plus norepinephrine, you already know from the previous chapter, that's smooth muscle or visceral muscle, right? But what else could, it goes, uh, what else can I talk about? Remember dopamine? You're gonna think what? Happy, well-being, right? That's what I'm gonna do. And serotonin, remember, we, we talked about, it's sleepiness. So it has to be inhibitory. Because when you sleep, are you excited? Right? And, oh, duh, 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 duh. And it's linked to depression. Because if it's mostly inhibitory, don't you think that might depress you? But if I have a SSRI, which is a selective serotonin reuptake inhibitor, it's used as an anti, uh, antidepressant drug. Hey, LSD, which I've never taken in my entire life, what will it do? You guys heard, you know, movies and stories. Doesn't it make you dream while you're awake? Serotonin. And of course, histamine, you already know what histamine is. Inflammation, uh, uh, increases inflammation. And you could see here, H, histamine, hypothalamus. And histamine goes, if you're inflamed, you're what? You're awake. But if I give you an antihistamine, what's gonna happen? You'll fall asleep. So look at this one, slide 53, and, uh, I'm not gonna do a question on that because I think you guys get the joke on this one. Oh, oh, and then slide 54, you have all these. Right? Substance P, pain. Pain's excitatory. And confound's endorphins, that's what? Right? You know what? Since there's two slides, let's make some questions. Let's just be, let's be fair about this. So which of the following, uh, functions? Uh, which of the following is a function of your, uh, endorphins? Increase pain? Oh, decrease pain? Either. Right? And of course, you look at it, it's what? Decrease pain. And then I could do the exact opposite. Goes, uh, which of the following is a function of substance P? And of course, P for pain, of course, it'll increase pain. Can I do, uh, um, uh, increased blood pressure, decreased blood pressure? Right? And remember, I said for nitric oxide? I told the whole story about decreased blood pressure, about the little blue pill. So, uh, what is the function of, uh, of nitrous oxide? Okay? So is that, uh, vasodilation, which you're gonna think what? Decreased blood pressure? Vasoconstriction? Increased blood pressure? No change in BP? And then I'll add, um, of, um... I'm gonna say, uh, inhibitory. Common inhibitory, uh, amino acid. Now, did we ever mention common inhibitory amino acid ever in lecture? No. So don't pick it. You do your, uh, process elimination. So when I'm doing my process elimination, he's never said this ever. So you, what are you gonna do? Get rid of it. So now, what are the only choices you really have? Vasodilatation, vasoconstriction, no change in BP. And nitrous oxide, remember nitroglycerin? Remember, uh, the little blue pill? Viagra? What did they do? They bottom out your blood pressure. Because don't I need parasympathetic? For, uh, you know, for increased blood flow? Yeah. So those slides look good, 53, 54. Disorders? No. Drugs, no. So I'm looking at a whole bunch of other things? No, no, no. Opiates, no. You have a whole, you have a whole five weeks on drugs. Neural pool, facilitation, convergence, divergence. I said, nice to know, that means what? No. Not important. Drug addiction, no. Right? You're gonna learn all that. So that is it. I'm now at the logo, McGraw-Hill. So this is uh chapter ten. So I have the habit of doing what? Bio one eleven. Chapter ten. And Saturday session. And today is what? The fourteenth? And good on you. It's, this is quite serendipitous that uh my Mac wasn't playing with me today. So now you have a much better set. This set is, oh, boy. I gave away the farm on this one. Oh, well, my stupidity is your advantage. Does anyone have any questions? Uh, did anyone look at uh eleven? Um. Anyone have any questions on this? Let me save it before.
The only question that I had, because I have to leave here in a second. Um. Um, hold on.
Yeah, I got a, I got a church gig in about an hour and a half, so that's why I said it eleven-thirty. But again, uh this afternoon's a church gig, so I just have to make sure there's no feedback. So uh I can, um I have my laptop with me, so if you have any questions, uh I can kinda semi-answer.
Okay, I can always email you, but I think, I mean, I haven't looked over this super much, but like the stages of sleep. I was like not.
The only one you need to care about is what? REM.
Oh, okay.
Which is stage four, which is the last stage. And what's, what's important there? Let me save this. Uh because I, I'm very, because if I don't save it, then I have to recreate it. I've done that before. All right. So uh the key to uh, well, when you're looking at uh the stages of sleep, right, is let me write it down here in the very end. So the only, because what happens to your reticular activating system or your RAS? Right? Your RAS now does what? Decrease. So that means what? I'm gonna go get what? Sleepy. So everything's gonna start winding down. That stage is one, two, and three or non-REM. So that's okay. But what's REM sleep? Rapid eye movement. In rapid eye movement, you have something called uh paroxysmal uh effects. And what's that? What's gonna happen? Everything's gonna start getting erratic. Your blood pressure and your heart rate is gonna get weird. Now, in rapid eye movement, what's really important? Why they call it paradoxical or paradoxical, paradoxical, paradoxical effects? Is what happens to the brain activity? Super activated. And that's how you get dreams. So that's the big thing about REM sleep. In non-REM sleep, you're sleepy and your brain activity is what? Goes normal to low. Right? When you're winding down, right? And those of you having trouble sleeping, that's the reason why. Don't look at your screen for at least thirty minutes. Because if you start looking at your screen, what's gonna happen? You're gonna have normal, it goes, you're gonna have normal brain activity and you won't get sleepy. Right? You have to like ease yourself or coax yourself into it. And it's many, there's many strategies for people who have insomnia. For whatever reason, none of them worked for me. But when I do sleep, I hit REM. My BP and my heart rate are gonna get weird. It's gonna start getting irregular. Right? And then uh what's gonna happen to, uh what's another thing that happens? I lose tone. My muscles are all gonna get flimsy. And of course, everything starts getting weird, but what gets super weird? Your brain activity starts ramping up. And that's why in REM sleep, that's where you get massive amounts of brain activity, which then could potentially lead to dreams. Oh, by the way, you dream every night. It's whether you remember them or not. Right? Every time you get REM sleep, uh uh brain activity is high and there's a lot of processing going on.
So all these like answers where you say stages, it's just like to trick us, I guess.
Yeah, so don't care about one, two, three, who cares?
Uh, okay, alright.
That's what, non-REM. So I could ask you, in non-REM, does anything happen to your blood pressure or your heart rate? No. It goes, how's your brain activity? Normal to low. Right? And are you sleepy? Yes. But in REM, rapid eye movement, will you have rapid eye movement underneath your eyeball? Or not, eyeballs, what am I saying? Will your BP and heart rate start getting weird? And that's why when we put you under, don't you think that's why the anesthesiologist is watching your blood pressure and your heart rate and your breathing every thirty seconds? And I'm not exaggerating. It's like fif, every fifteen to thirty seconds. Uh and if it gets weird, really weird, the anesthesiologist starts calling out numbers. And the surgeon, if the numbers are bad, the surgeon has to stop.
Yeah.
Right?
Alrighty.
So that, that, anyone have any other questions? I, I goes, I can be here like, like, like ten more minutes. So uh look at, uh look at that thing. And uh and then um what do you call that? Uh just look at it over right now and look at the questions. And which one is, hey, that don't make any sense. Bio one eleven, practice. How do you make this? Is this the one? How do I make it a list? Here. Is this it? Ooh, why does it say error? Oh, well, let's try it. Let's be stupid about it. Okay? Or maybe it's the fact that I have to close this out?
Doctor Gras, did you already make um chapter nine quiz available to us or are we still waiting?
Yeah, it's up.
It's up?
Yup. So let me see if this works first. Yeah, it's up, it's working. Wunderbar. That's good. Uh can you repeat?
How long will it be up for?
Uh Monday, uh midnight.
Awesome.
So you got a lot of time and there's no time limit, so you're good. So uh take a, take a couple of minutes to look at um uh these chapter eleven sample questions. And I could, I could answer, like you're like, oh, I have no idea what this means or that. And uh um I could at least, uh you got me for a couple more minutes. Uh but the thing we just did right now, due for every other chapter. And when you look at it, how long did it take us? And you don't have to do the questions because you already got a whole bunch of questions. So what do you need to do? You have to ask yourself, okay, I take the questions blind and then the topics that trip me up, that's the thing I hit. Right? I'll hit that more than once. Because that's the thing that will potentially bring your grade down. Okay? Let me close this.
Professor, you're going to post the Word document separately from the recording, correct?
Yeah, I'm gonna actually put the recording like uh right here, like in announcements. Once I uh think you're gonna go, it's gonna go sample ten, ten questions, or I can put it separately. Because me, I like putting it where it is. So I'll put it here and maybe uh modify the um uh wait, I'll do something like this. Like chapter ten sample questions and goes, and Saturday video.
Yeah, I just want access to be able to copy and paste the.
Yeah, and then I'll put it right here, video pending. And I'll do that right now before I gotta skedaddle. Let's see if it works. See, it'll say video pending and in about like thirty minutes, there should be a video in here. And if not, or if you can't access it, shoot me, uh shoot me an email. And uh everybody, uh but there's like four or five people uh that emailed me since yesterday, but they're about lab, they're about stuff that's not pertinent to Tuesday. So I'll get to it like uh maybe Sunday morning. Because uh some, uh some of you get really obsessive, which is, which is good. That means you're in healthcare, right? But you're obsessive about lab and you're obsessive about exam two. Let's now all obsess about exam three. That's the only thing I want you guys to be thinking of. And um uh if you gotta take a hit on homework or whatever, what's ten percent on homework? Who cares? Let's all just focus on Tuesday's exam and how to totally, you know, totally own it. And I hope I gave enough tools for each and every one of you to just totally ace this thing. I will not be surprised if there's like twelve one-hundreds. Because I can't uh especially this chapter ten, I gave away the farm. To be honest, I think I little went. Ah, I think I went overboard in my sharing as usual. So anyone have any questions uh on anything else? Because uh if not, uh let's close this thing out. And then uh start doing some work. Are we good? We good to log off? So if nothing's going, going, gone? Get to work? And I'll see you on Tuesday. Oh, by the way, there are some people requested uh stuff on Monday. Uh yes, please, in email, so I can, uh I can get uh groups together. Okay? Because I already got, I already have like two appointments for Monday, one on Teams, one in real life uh uh on campus uh to get together. But again, if you can't make it, um um again, request, because how do I know what you need help on if I, you know, if you don't email me? And you guys know my memory's shot. So with that being said, good on you, right? Um um uh I'll see you on the interwebs. Study, study, study. Have a good one.